Okay, welcome everyone that is joining us from home. We apologize for the delay in getting on air tonight from the work session. Hopefully you were watching the work session as we immediately started just prior to this meeting. I'll call this meeting to order and this is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Tuesday, May 26th. If we could all please rise, I'll have the invocation lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we've received within our city. We appreciate every day the sacrifices made by those who are in our military and those who are public work, public service employees such as our policemen, firemen, and even Public Works as they make our lives better and safer each day. Bless them and their families as we move forward in history. Also, Lord, we ask for a portion of your wisdom that we understand the desires and needs of our city as we make decisions about its future. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is a special presentation and that's basically an introduction of new employees to the Pecosin City Council. And Randy?
Mr. Mayor, as is our custom, we invite our new employees to come and introduce themselves to you and to the community and have an opportunity for us to tell them how much we appreciate the great work they're gonna do. At this point, I'd like to ask Tom Jones to come forward with his two new employees, Mr. Jason Price and Thomas Edmund. Let him introduce the two. Gentlemen, we're glad you're here.
This is Mr. Edmund Thomas Edmund. This is Jason Price. You know, I want to welcome, first of all, you know, to our department. They've been here for a little while already and I tell you, I think that they're gonna be two really good employees and it's a pleasure to have them here. It's a pleasure to have them onboard and I'll let them, you know, introduce themselves.
Please, sir.
Like you said, I'm Jason Price and I definitely appreciate the opportunity to work for the city of Pecosin. I'm definitely, first of all, I'm a family man and I'm happy to be here and definitely appreciate it.
What are you gonna be doing for us?
I'll be working with...
Parks Maintenance.
Parks Maintenance. Great, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening and you'll always find that every member of council up here, we're all appreciable. Don't be afraid to talk to us about Tom.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank y'all.
All right. We may send you right back to him, but you know, you can at least tell us. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Tom Edmund. I'm also a new Parks Maintenance employee. Been on the job for, this is my second week now, thoroughly enjoying it, very thankful for the opportunity to work in and for my hometown. Live here in Pecosin, been here since 2002.
Excellent. Well, thank you and welcome for, you know, welcome again and we'll offer the same thing to you. You can tell, also you can talk to us about any of the Parks and Rec employees or anybody that may just give you a generally hard time. We appreciate everything that you're gonna do. As you know, Parks and Rec is really important to the city of Pecosin. Get those, keep our kids occupied and out of trouble and you facilitate that every day. So, please, let us know how we can help you in all seriousness. Okay, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before Tom and his men leave, just wanted to say thank you to Tom and the folks from Public Works to working to help reestablish the flag holders last week. We became aware of the need to help out Wednesday night and when I called Tom on Friday morning to see how things were going, he told me we were already done.
Yeah, thank you so much, Tom, because that did worry us and a lot of people don't know that you scrambled that night, but we appreciate that because that's one of the greatest things about the city of Pecosin is the flags up and down with Creek Road sponsored by Kiwanis. I don't want anyone to forget that, but especially on Memorial Day, that was a very important holiday and it set us up for continued great feedback that we got during that ceremony, which, by the way, was probably the largest, I think, I've seen at the Memorial Day service. Well done to everybody, including Post, who put that on for us. Thank you again, Tom.
All right, next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors and this is time to address city council on any subject. No public hearings this evening, so Dr. Flynn?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Charles Flynn. I live in 110 Sandy Bay Drive. I came up here mainly to impart some information which maybe a lot of you know about, but probably a lot of people, especially the citizens at home, do not. An application has been made to the Virginia Marine Resources Commission, VMRC, for 100 acres of oyster grounds right off Pecosin beaches where the Pecosin flats are. This was poorly advertised. It goes back to February, so they've had a three-month run at it. Little legal notification in the Pecosin Post with, just generic, it doesn't say anything and for more information, call a number. Well, in any event, what has been done, there's an application has been made for 100 acres of prime recreational water that's been used for many, many years. Over the holiday, hundreds of boats out there fishing, water skiing, and so forth. This application would take 100 acres of that prime waterways and incorporate up to, it's hard to believe, but 25,000 oyster cages. They're allowed to put in 100 oyster cages per acre, times 100 acres is an awful lot of navigational hazards. This is actually an issue that surfaced four years ago and is supposedly resolved and now it's come back again. Four years ago, a similar application for oyster aquaculture was requested from VMRC in front of Beach Road, a few miles down. And that was, the petition was withdrawn and the, actually, the VMRC study group felt that the area for the 80 acres was totally inappropriate for any kind of shellfish aquaculture. And not only that, the, other than the 80 acres that was applied for, VMRC study group put out a map which still exists incorporating 420 acres of land which they said should never be used for aquaculture. Probably the main reason being it's subject to the northeast storms that come in and what they call the wave fetch, the unobstructed flow of the waves with the wind determines the force with which they hit. And the wave fetch for Beach Road and for this new request is identical. It's 28 miles of unobstructed wave action coming and hitting where all these oyster cages are. The reason in 2011 the request was denied was because of the staff saying that they anticipated that with the storm, wave-storm action from the northeast, there would be massive displacement of these oyster cages and God knows where they would end up and they can weigh hundreds of pounds. Why they have brought this up again, I don't know whether it's politics, but in any event, the VMRC now says, "We're gonna go by case by case." The 100 acres that they have requested now, and I'll tell you how you can pull it down from VMRC website, is right in the middle of the 425 acres that was deemed totally inconsistent with aquaculture because of the vulnerability to the northeast storms. This is the way it stands. The notification, this is it. It's, "Mr. So-and-so has supplied for approximately 100 acres of oyster planting ground in Pecosin River near Roberts Creek." And then it gives some latitude and longitude and that's it. How you would know this, this application, what it would portend is unknown to me. The application was put in three and a half months ago. We just learned by accident about it a couple of weeks ago. Numerous protests have been sent out to VMRC, including myself. I've already received a reply back from them. My next mission is, this isn't just our street, it's everybody that uses the water and that can be down pasture road, Wagner Road, Little Creek. Many, many areas will be affected and anybody that has to come out into the water through that area is gonna be impacted by these oyster cages, so.
Okay.
I think it should be voted down. I've heard a rumor tonight that they had already withdrawn the application, but I haven't seen that.
Well, thank you for bringing this to council and appreciate the subject. What I will say is that it's probably the first time that many of us have heard about the particular application. I was kinda shocked by what you said about, I remember four years ago that they said, "Here's an overlay of areas that really we've considered before" and you would think that that information would be available to anybody who wants to apply.
100% of this requested, 100 acres now fits in that area they deemed totally inadvisable for aquaculture.
How about if we follow up on that and we'll let you know?
I'll follow up myself and...
I know you will, Dr. Flynn. Yes.
I read something that somebody...
I should mention, if you could, go to the VMRC site and go to Habitat Management and they have a thing there, current applications for oyster rights. And there's a, on the far right, there's a map. You click on that and here's this big red map showing what they intend to...
Okay.
It's very scary.
Thank you. Councilman?
The applicant for that, I understand, reduced it down to five. He asked VMRC to reduce the acreage in his application down to five to 10 acres. He was unaware when he applied about a lot of the problems with that particular area.
That's why I said, you would think that when you go to apply, there would be this big red box that says, "Don't be here."
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, we will follow up and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And a little known fact, the VMRC won't tell anybody and they happen to tell us after the fact, is that there are a lot of restrictions. They apply for 100 acres and typically they'll get 10% of what they apply for because of sea grass, the depth of the water, and the location. And so, just because they apply for 100 acres has no bearing as to what they'll get. Typically, don't get 10% of what they ask for.
Yeah, it's just surprising that we've got an area that's been studied before. You would think they would say, "Not there."
Yeah.
You'd think it'd be publicized much better than that.
Ray Gordon Helsel, back in 2011, got involved in this and he had a bill that was killed in February 4th that would have mandated, when somebody took out an application for projects of this size, they would have to notify the affected residents within a certain area. That, his bill was tabled on the 4th. On the 8th, the applicant made the application for, not a conspiracy theory, but the timing is kinda strange.
All right, well, thank you very much. Anyone else on any subject? All right, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our special session of May 5th, 2015.
Second. And that special session was the interview of school board applicants, is that correct?
It was a regular meeting.
Regular?
We just held it on a different...
Oh, I got you, I got you. I'm sorry. I should've read this. Okay. Motion made and seconded? Did I, did we approve those minutes?
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aha.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. First item under unfinished business then is a resolution making appointments to the school board.
We have moved that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the school board with the following names inserted. For the Central Precinct, for her second term, Gail L. Whitaker, with a at-large position for his second term, Stephen S. Cast, and for the Eastern Precinct, for his first term, Wayne E. Holcomb.
There are seconds?
Second.
And motion made and seconded to approve the resolution with those names inserted. I'm sure there will be no further discussion on that. And seeing none, so Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Under new business this evening, we have a resolution accepting a flood mitigation assistance grant for the elevation of three residential structures and associated funding.
Mr. Mayor, just to show you that there's never an end to other duties assigned, the city has been fortunate enough to receive yet another elevation grant. This will be our third active grant. This one is three homes, which will join the 10 and 9 respectively, so we're at 22 now. The couple of things that are different about this one, it's a different pot of money, the rules are different for it, and by that I mean different by the federal standards, not the city of Pecosin. These are supposedly 100% grants. The others did require cost matches. The timeframe for these, I believe, is two years. The others, my point in telling you is, it looks like a third elevation grant and it is, but it is a different type of elevation grant and our first official action is to accept that and that starts the clock.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution accepting a flood mitigation assistance grant, FMA 2014-001 entitled, "City of Pecosin's Elevation of Three Residential Structures."
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any consideration for, any changes in language to allow the folks to basically buddy onto them? To basically add to this, or is that down here, MK Taylor?
This is, that's a concrete...
Okay, so there's, because I know there was discussion amongst council to basically allow people to add into their grant and do private things, or we threw that issue?
Well, what I was gonna do is get a consensus. I don't think we want to add it to this specific one because that applied to another grant for 10 homes, that if a resident wants to further elevate the house, like, let's say that they were gonna elevate it eight feet, the resident wants it 10 feet, that we can add the blocks necessary to get it up to 10 feet, but nothing else, just the elevation. Because it wouldn't make any sense if somebody wants their house elevated 10 feet, set the thing back down, hook up everything, and then hire somebody else to lift it back up and add two blocks to it.
Okay, so you want to handle that under directives and try to get a consensus?
Yeah, yeah.
Got you. Okay. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded to adopt the 100% funding on elevation of three residential structures. We have a first and second. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, the next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with MK Taylor, contractor for concrete work.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would note to you, Mr. Jones is here if you have questions. We recently rebid contract, concrete services for a contract that expires in August of this year and as is noted in the staff report, we received two bids and MK Taylor Jr. Contractors Incorporated was determined by Mr. Jones and his evaluation team as the most responsive and responsible bidder. We ask for consideration of the contract. The way we do this is when we need it, we contract for it. If we don't need it, we don't. It's a fixed contract in that respect.
Got you. So it's not a set project that you're going to do, but an overlay to allow you to contract with them?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Just one, just for information, Tom, who was the second bidder?
It was Danny.
Danny?
Yeah, I, yeah, surprised they got beat.
Okay. Is there a motion to move this forward?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with MK Taylor Jr. Contractors Incorporated.
Second. Motion made and seconded that we move this item forward and prove this ability to contract. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, next under, item under new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Hampton to fund and maintain a staff position to assist in the joint coastal resiliency initiative. And this is a coastal resiliency project.
That's a lot of...
Yes, it is a lot of words.
That's a lot of words, Mr. Mayor.
I say we're gonna appoint, maybe have a consultant.
As the, as the council is aware, we have a unique, special, and very good relationship with the city of Hampton, which goes from the mundane, day-to-day stuff like traffic engineering to successfully teaming together to advance the I-64 widening project and many points in between. I was approached a few months ago by the city manager of Hampton to see if we would be interested in partnering with the city of Hampton on the creation of a position whose focus and experience and role would be to help the two communities identify ways to access the federal and state resources necessary to deal with the type of coastal issues and coastal mitigation that we're dealing with. It could be everything from how to prepare against storm damage, that type of mitigation. It could, it could bleed over to dredging, which we talked about recently. It could also have implications for TMDL. The primary role would be coastal management and adaptation and mitigation, but those things are all related to some degree or another. They've asked us if we would consider partnering with them on a proportionate basis for personnel. You see in the document prepared by the city of Hampton, our relative populations and you see our relative proposed share with a not-too-exceed number in the first year. The idea is to hire a person on staff that would be a city of Hampton employee who we would have a role in selecting and a role in evaluating, who's, who would have the experience, significant senior-level experience in these types of coastal mitigation issues at either the state or federal level. And that this person could help us identify how to plug into these potentially massive resources bases for things that we know we can't tackle, but things may be well coming our way. There is also this idea about the larger coastal resiliency project with decor, which is really, I mean, first, you have really just developed what that means so that, so that both city councils would have a decision to make in the future. So there is no, there is no commitment to that project here, other than help us flesh it out as something that may be a potential game changer for, for us in terms of accessing significant future federal resources for coastal resiliency. I'd be glad to speak to it at more length, but I think I've captured it.
I think that's right.
This is for one year?
The agreement itself does not have a termination date. However, either party can withdraw it 30 days.
But money is for one year.
That's correct. There is, there is money identified, thank you, Ms. Freeman. In the current year budget, set aside, that could be used for this program, I'd set it aside with the contingency to allow you flexibility should you wish to move ahead. In the future, assuming you agree with this tonight, we would be asking you to appropriate it and failure to appropriate it would be a signal to go ahead and terminate the agreement on our behalf.
By that time, we would have some look at the result.
Absolutely. It'd give us a chance to evaluate it without any long-term commitment.
Well, the, so we're on the same page, I guess the timing of this would be probably towards the end of the last quarter of this fiscal year, right?
It's quite possible by the time they, assuming you approve it, it'll take some time to go through the hiring process, so it wouldn't surprise me if it went into September, October.
I just want to make sure, and what you basically said was that the money's already in the existing budget?
That's correct.
Okay. Just to make sure we clarify those two points. All right, is there a motion to proceed with this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Hampton for a joint coastal resiliency initiative.
There are seconds?
I'm second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we move forward with this. I will tell you that city council, I've never experienced a greater feeling of participation with one of our sister cities or counties than what we have with Hampton right now. And everything from protection of Langley Air Force Base to NASA, I consider them to be really locked in step with us and I appreciate their support on many things and they've actually leveraged some of the things that we have done in the past to their benefit, mostly on the GIS side. So, appreciate that and with that said, if there's no other comments?
Question?
Go ahead.
And I second all your comments about the cooperation from the city of Hampton. They have proven themselves to be a really good neighbor and certainly will be paying the small piece of the salary for this person, but it's gonna be a Hampton city employee. Will they also have a responsibility to the city of Pecosin?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear those words and I wanted to hear those.
Yes, and proportionate with your, with your population.
The agreement, goodness gracious, contemplates that we, that that gets tracked and that should we find ourselves in the future using 50% of that position, the formula may change. It also would change in the other direction if we didn't. The idea of having them be a city of Hampton employee, two reasons for that. One, they're the major funder and you can't be a simultaneous employee of two governments. So, given the level of trust and the working relationship we have with the city of Hampton and I personally have a city manager of Hampton, I have no reservation about this.
Very good.
I have two comments. First, I wonder if it would be worth our time to talk to both our state representatives and the federal representatives and request a state-level position that would be housed locally, because I just feel like that's reasonable. We're doing their job for them and the same thing federally. We're also talking about Langley Air Force Base and NASA, which are federal institutions that are heavily affected by everything we're going to be talking about. So I think it might be worth running that by some of our representatives.
We will certainly ask.
And that way, we could also, you know, potentially talk to York County as well, which I think, I think two right now, the Hampton and Pecosin right now is enough, but we also want to make sure that we're working well with York County.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Questions or comments? If not, we have the motion made and seconded that we proceed forward. So Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aha.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay.
Quick evening, this lady.
Comments of the city manager?
We have, we have one more, sir.
Hi.
Get an opportunity to hear from Amy Blow and her team.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the resolution, I'm sorry, I already checked it off. I was moving too fast. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for website design services and support.
Mr. Mayor, as council members are well aware, anything relating to actually how websites work and their mechanics are way beyond my area of expertise.
Mine, too.
Fortunately, we have some really excellent folks in the city of Pecosin and in our school division, our partners for IT, who, when I asked if they would come together, I didn't have to drag them. They, they've done a great job and I'd like to ask Amy Blow, who, her day job is working in our library, but her moonlight job during the day is our website design team, to introduce her team and tell you a little bit about what this item is. Amy, if you could come forward?
You mean a website's not where a spider builds and stuff?
It was, in my day.
About the same thing. Got a lot of bed flies and...
Yeah.
All I can, all I can tell you is any website improvement for the city of Pecosin is a good one.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor and members of council, due to the advancing technology and unsupported software, a committee was formed last fall to create a scope of services and a request for proposals for website design services. The committee included Jessica Wood, Vicki Diggs, Gretchen Gochenauer... Diggs, Gretchen Gochnauer, Joe Cook Leo, and me. A request for proposal was put together, and it was advertised in early February on the city's website, in the daily press, and on the public purchase website. Eighteen proposals were received, reviewed, and scored by the committee, the top three were interviewed in April. The committee has selected Civic Plus to design the city's new website based on the functionality of their, their site design and its staff capacity to maintain the site and the security of the site. We feel the new website will have a modern look, and it will be user-friendly for both the citizens of Pecosin and the staff that are maintaining it, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody prepared to make a motion, or has anybody got any questions? You can already see that our, our experience with websites is quite limited, but Tracy may understand a little bit.
We're good. Please, carry on.
But we do understand their importance, and thank you for, you and the committee for doing that, and putting this proposal together. I don't think we have any questions. With that said, is there a motion to move forward with this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Icon Enterprises, doing business as Civic Plus for website design services and support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that we approve this resolution and authorize city manager to enter into that contract, and therefore have a really good website up that we'll stop complaining to him about.
It's still better than most people, most governments, Mr. Mayor, but we want to be, we don't strive to be as good as most, we strive to be better than almost everyone.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments of council? Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aha.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and now comments of the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate with something I said a minute ago, I just want to thank Amy and her team again, not only did they do an excellent job all the way through this long journey, but almost all of them are sitting here tonight, because it was important enough that you had a question, they wanted to be here for you, so I'll commend them and thank them for that as well. And that's all I have, sir.
Oh, a quick night. All right, Councilman Vernal?
A couple of things, first of all, I want to, on behalf of Kiwanis, thank Tom and his staff for putting in the holders for the flag, so that we were able to get them up on Memorial Day, it was, it was a great help, and we wouldn't have been able to do it without them, so we do appreciate that. Speaking of the Memorial Day, the, the service that was held was, I think, the finest I've seen in, in, in years, and I was especially pleased that the young lady who gave the address, one of our former high school graduates, Peggy Gross, at the time, I'm not sure what her married name is, and she's now, I think, a lieutenant commander in the Coast Guard, she, and she was a student just two or three years ago, but it was a wonderful ceremony, and certainly thank the American Legion, the auxiliary for doing that, and just to thank Charlie for coming, because I'll guarantee in a Northeastern where those cages will end up, my backyard. And, and would, and would also block, completely block access to Roberts Creek, it's bad enough now with the shoaling, but it would, it would wipe it out as, as any kind of vessel going in or out of it, except maybe a kayak.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Green?
Just to say that we had the food bank today, and want to thank the Kiwanis Club and the, and especially Tracy for working inside with my wife, Pat, I hope she wasn't too hard on you like she usually is on me, we served 59 families, which was a record, we were so busy, we didn't have time to add up the individuals, because families probably translates into 200 individuals that are helped, and we were given prior warning this time by the food bank that the USDA would not provide any meat, but thanks to the Kiwanis, the Lions, the Exchange, the Ruertons, American Legion, and our anonymous donor, we are able to buy meat at 19 cents a pound, so knowing that we weren't going to get USDA meat, we bought extra meat, we had plenty, and the good thing about when we buy it, we're not bound by the federal government's wonderful rules for USDA, so we can give it to anyone, even if they don't qualify for USDA, I mean, if, if they're $50 a week more than what the range is, we have to turn them away or just give them produce, but with this extra meat, we don't have to turn them away, we can get plenty to eat, and we can also take it to the thrift store, anything that's left over and give it to them, which they're very grateful to get, so we did, we did exactly that today, we had some left over, and we took it to them and filled their freezers.
Very good.
We're very thankful to the service clubs for donating money yearly to, to keep, to perpetuate this, this buying program that the food bank lets us do, so appreciate the Kiwanis today, they did a wonderful job. Also, if we could, as I mentioned earlier, it came to my attention that some of the recipients of the grant to raise their houses wanted to go higher than what we are requiring the contractor to take it to, and I would like to get a consensus of the council to allow Randy, now, this doesn't mean we're going to do poor garage floors, or we're going to leave walls out or anything like that, if they want to just go two or three blocks higher, or however much higher they want to go, that we can do that, and not go through the process of setting the house back down and hiring somebody else to raise it again and get it up to where the homeowner wants it.
As I understand what you're asking, you're, you're asking to, to allow Randy to make decisions about additional height only?
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
Okay, and that would be paid for by the?
Grant.
By the grant?
The additional.
The additional would be paid for by the homeowner? Right, okay, so in other words, if a homeowner was, say, so, somebody was told that they would raise their, the minimum to raise would be six feet, and they decided they wanted to go eight, and want to go two more blocks, they could do that, at their, at their expense?
Their expense.
Okay, so does everybody understand that, but it's, it's height only?
Height only.
I, I understand that, but I wanted to ask about the height only, is there other judgment and common sense things that we could extend that to?
Can we get a consensus to allow Randy common sense?
I think, I think the, the one thing I would warn us of is that the contract and the grant is for house elevation, and if we start stepping outside of what the grant is, and anything that they do with the, with the private contractor, they can do with the private contractor.
While, while it's elevating.
With another private contractor, or whatever, however they coordinate it, I just don't want it to be coming to the city manager deciding, well, this guy gets a garage floor, this guy, he wants a, a pad out back, or whatever, I don't want to get into that, nor do I want to put the grants at risk. Okay, so this would be for additional elevation discussions only, anything else, they would have to privately contract.
And that at the homeowner's expense?
Yes.
At the homeowner's expense. Very good.
One of the things that would occur if you elevated the house further, the, the cost of putting the access steps would be increased also, so that would, that would have to go along with the, with that, with the owner's responsibility.
Right, got it, okay, Randy, do you think that would provide you enough guidance?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
A consensus of council?
Yes.
That's good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, bud, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, because you really took a lot of minutes tonight.
I'm sorry.
All right, Bud?
I like to second everything that's been said so far, and thank Tom Jones for introducing our new city employees, and welcome Tom Edman and Jesse Price, Jason Price, to the city, glad to have those new employees, and especially like a special thanks to Dr. Flynn for bringing his comments to the full city council, I had not heard about that application at all, and I think those things ought to be advertised very clearly before the citizens of Pecosin, because that's, that's at the mouth of Bennett's Creek, a lot of boats go in and out of there, a lot of boats pull over to the side there and fish, and that would be a boating obstruction hazard that might be unknown by many people, and those pots, as been said earlier, could wind up in people's backyards, not a pleasant thing, and I think they ought to be advertised much better than it is, and thank you for bringing that up.
Councilwoman Crawford?
I fully second everything that's been said, and I wanted to add one more thing, the Kiwanis barbecue that we had last weekend, I think, was a record breaker, we had a lot of people come and eat, and the delicious food, which is great, and I wanted to let people know that we're also selling bulk barbecue, it's June 5th or 6th, whichever is the Saturday, and if you want to order, there's an online form where you can order online, and then you just pay when you pick it up, or you can get in touch with Ray Vernal or me, and we're easily found if you Google or look on the city website.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Taylor?
Just going to comment on Memorial Day, as Dr. Vernal said, I think it was the best one that, that we've had, I think having the local, our local person as the speaker added tremendously to the overall event, but I just thought it went really well, and that's, well, we had very, very good school board applications for the one slot that we had, and I want to thank the folks for doing that, and ask them to do it some more, and that's all.
I think all those comments are well said, and I won't, I won't back any of them, except for the, the Memorial Day service, I truly enjoyed that, always do, but it was special this year, just from the attendance, I, I thought was really great. I will mention the one thing that I have to bring to the attention, and this is really open to citizens as well as to city staff, and that is, it is time for the, the annual Mayor's Cup Blood Drive, okay, and what I would like to say is that the mayor this year is laying down a special challenge to those in public service, and that would be the police and fire departments, I've seen them missing in the last couple of years, and so I would like to challenge those two departments to show up this year and offer their arms and their blood, as, as we normally do, the city is, actually, it's just a great time to come together as a city staff, and if you like, you can come watch the mayor give blood, which is sometimes hilarious, because I'm, I'm not known for being particularly fond of it, but I do do it, and I don't know why they named it after the mayor, but we'll be there, and I welcome all of council to be there if you're able, and I know staff will support that, but I, I didn't want that to, to go untouched, and that is, what's the date of that? June 18th, and that'll be all day, and it'll be in this room, so it's your opportunity to give more than just your tax dollars, but your blood to the city.
Mr. Mayor, there's also opportunities for folks, maybe that can't give blood for whatever reason, to help out with, with registration and, and food and other things, so if you're not a person that likes to, to give blood weeks, could sure still use your help.
Yeah, and I should have extended that, you can come watch the mayor and Dave Callis give blood, which is sometimes exciting as well. All right, so with that said, I don't have anything else to add, I will ask council for a motion to adjourn.
No move, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion made and seconded, that we adjourn, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and we are adjourned, thank you very much.
For those of you keeping, keeping up, Pecosin Men's High School soccer team, I guess Lafayette.